Okay, it's called to order the work session for Tuesday, February 11th. Mr. Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes, Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Very good, everyone's present and accounted for. We've allocated 30 minutes here today to discuss the rec center. So I'll turn it over to Director Xol.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for giving us this time to present the findings for the recreation feasibility study. Tonight presenting will be Jason Gank. He's a senior lead for Barry Dunn, who has been hired to do not only the post master plan, but also the rec feasibility study. So we have a presentation that will get you through.
Great, welcome, Jason, thanks for being here.
Well, thank you. There we go, sorry, it was red, so I figured we weren't live. My name is Jason Gank and it is my absolute pleasure to be here with you this evening. By the way, pretty rare situation, I happen to be local. I don't, unfortunately, I can't claim and enjoy the many benefits as a Timnith resident, but nonetheless, I'm, let's just say nearby, but I am a consumer of your retail and as well as your trails and open space, so it's kind of rare for me to have that opportunity. So I think it's also pretty cool. But tonight, I'm going to provide a brief presentation and certainly want to entertain and discuss any questions you might have. And as, you know, tonight, we're primarily discussing considerations and feedback we've received from the community, as well find, as well as findings from our studies related to a recreation center. As I'm sure you're aware, a larger comprehensive master plan has been underway for some time. And by the way, your staff and community have been absolutely world-class. Everyone in your community wants to have a conversation about the future parks and recreation, and it's not that difficult to talk to them, really warm and welcoming, and your staff has just been world-class, providing information, providing input and giving guidance. So just want to acknowledge that and appreciate that collaboration, because I, just in my experience, any collaboration like that usually leads to really positive outcomes. So again, the focus for tonight is on the recreation center, some general updates on that particular area, but we do, just from a very high level, and I won't read all these to you, but our overall efforts of the comprehensive planning is really helping to provide a 10-year framework and map to help inform decisions. And of course, one of those outcomes from some of our findings were about facilities, in fact, is related to your recreation center. Our approach is generally listed there in those five phases for the comprehensive planning efforts. We're in about at the master plan development phase, we're getting very close, and we plan to wrap up roughly before the end of March. And, you know, at the pace certainly hand-in-hand with your staff to make sure we're hitting our marks and expectations. I do want to just briefly talk about the voices of your community, right in that image you have there, one of my colleagues, Ryan, and that happens to be some of the comment cards that he received from your community at community pop-up events, and I don't know how many hundreds are there right now, but that's just a fun picture to give you an idea of how vocal and involved your community members are, which has been awesome. You've probably seen these images before, just a reminder, this is the brand and the images that we tried to help make sure that people knew that this was about the Parks and Recreation Plan, because you got so many other awesome things going on, we wanted to have a unique identity. And of course, a highlight that wheel essentially shows, we work very hard to talk and review opportunities with stakeholders, with groups, with individuals, with both users and non-users of your system. We try to be as comprehensive as possible, and fortunately, your community has been just amazing in that regard or giving feedback. Just a quick aerial map here, these various dots means various types of engagements we conducted on-site. This is just an illustration to help emphasize that we really try to work thoughtfully and strategically with your staff to get out where the people are and visit and get to where they're regularly at and have conversations with them about the future. So jumping right to it, and a couple of findings I wanted to share with you, the Statisky Vald survey was conducted by our partner, ETC, that's all they do, all they do is Statisky Vald surveys, so they do a really great job, and this is probably one of the most significant findings of interest in the project that I've seen in all of my planning efforts. By the way, I've been at Barry Dunn four years, but 94% of your survey responses responded that they were very interested in supporting the exploration of a future recreation center in Timnith. By the way, if I didn't mention this already, very unique to you, first I've ever heard, your community, every homeowner was, had the ability to participate in the survey. Typically, we have a target range, and it's just not possible, but in your community, in fact, every community member had the opportunity to participate, and many of them did. And here's just another example, specifically Statisky Vald survey. When we talk about all the needs and areas of focus for, again, just Parks and Recreation, I certainly respect you have a lot more going on in the community, but this is just another example. You can see here, if we were to allocate $100 towards priorities for residents, as far as Parks and Recreation, of course, goes, the majority of that would be to support staff and exploration of the recreation center. And then, of course, you see the other areas there, which are improved trail connections and so forth and so on. So that's another interesting finding. And staff does have a copy of the entire comprehensive engagement results, I'm just giving you key highlights tonight. But there you have it, I think that, you know, the main message for tonight from our community engagement, and based on our observations and expertise, your community members are very, very interested in taking some additional steps to explore a future recreation center. And again, there's that stat as far as the Statisky Vald survey goes. You know, and one other step of this I thought I'd share briefly tonight, and not to take any excitement away from the final plan presentation, which we'll have the opportunity to do, but I also want to make sure that I touch base on analysis, because it's not just looking at community engagement, although we do believe great planning is centered around the voices of the community and organizations, but we also, this is just one example of some of the analysis we conducted, we use, in this case, we're looking at mobile AI, real-time data to look at things like journey mapping and where community members are going for their services, you know, visiting your parks and whatnot, and this just gives you an idea, and we picked, with your team, we picked the Windsor Recreation Center just to give an idea, and you probably already know this already, but it gives you a good indication of how many people going to Windsor Recreation Center are in fact coming from Timnith. And we have the ability to pull that data any given day, any given time, but it's, that's over a year analysis there, but it just gives you another one example of, we have many other ways we analyze this, but I just wanted to be clear, there's also data and analysis that is supporting in addition to the engagement information. So on to the next steps, certainly, we have a few more steps to go, and we did just have the board presentation, and of course, tonight, we're coming to you for an update. In February, March, we'll have the larger plan, full plan review opportunity, then hopefully, the opportunity to adopt the plan and have conducted the final recreation center feasibility analysis. And also, to be clear about that, just because the findings were so strong initially on the rec center, staff did acknowledge and ask us to take some additional steps to start really looking at things like pro forma and the feasibility of a recreation center, that is not done yet, want to be clear about that, we want to be very thorough. I believe the draft pro forma is scheduled to be in your staff's hands by the end of next week, but then we have additional steps to take there, too. So just to give you, just to be, give you an example of an understanding as to generally where we're at in the overall planning process. So with that, I said it'd be really high-level, didn't want to stay, go too far in the data and respect your time this evening, but I know Tom and I and others, I believe, are available for questions. Thank you for everything you do for the community and for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jason, we'll start with our prost committee on the end. Representative.
So I actually had an opportunity to ask any questions at the post meeting, but I did have one quick question, looking at one of the first slides that you showed with the data that 94% said yes to the dedicating, I think it was, can't remember if it was dedicating money to this one.
Yeah, sorry.
What percentage did actually report not sure? Because I know it says that it's excluding that group, do you happen to know what that number was?
I can look it up, but I'll make sure staff gets that, but I don't, I actually have my laptop here and I can pull up the full report, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. That's actually all I have.
Councilor Holt.
Thank you, first and foremost, I'm a big proponent of a rec center, but things that stand out for me before I ask my questions, I agree with you, I think our staff is world-class and the community is engaged, and when they're engaged, that's huge, because in the past, you know, we've heard loud and clear that they don't feel heard, so hearing that every home had the opportunity to, so my question is, they've asked for it, meaning the community, do you have a rough idea of how many participated overall?
The overall touchpoints, as far as, just to make sure I understand, participate in the survey or just in general?
Yeah, I mean, in general, so touchpoints, cards, filled out the survey, like, you know.
I do have that number, because we tallied that for the comprehensive engagement findings and report, and I don't have it right in front of me right this second, but again, we'll have it on my laptop and I'll get that right back to you.
Yeah, just curious to see if, you know, when provided the opportunity, how many took advantage of it?
Tom might, sorry, Tom, I didn't mean to put you in the spot, my friend.
So we had 515 people complete the survey and actually selected an answer, 403 said yes, 28 said no, and 84 said not sure.
Okay, good, and then I'm assuming that that's just the survey itself, now the card, you add the cards in and all the other stuff, touchpoints, who scanned the code, that's just at least giving the opportunities is big, in my opinion.
Yes, and I'll give you that exact number of the overall tally of all the engagements, I do have that for you, and yes, just to give you a highlight, we have conducted discovery sessions with other area recreation providers, with different groups, from sports groups to school groups to those sort of things, and a lot of meeting people where they are to have these conversations, and just my, I just, it was, it was very clear that with the most conversations your community brought up to us as the outside consultants was a recreation center, in some way, shape, or form.
That's awesome, and I think even more, the overwhelming 94%, you know, it was a wow for me, right, when I saw that, now I'm more curious as to why the six said no. So was it a just, you know, not in our cup of tea, we wouldn't go there? And then my last question, and again, maybe broad, but I look at this, too, not only as a fulfilling the needs of the community, but also the potential revenue that's generated. So in your report, when you have the slide for Windsor and how many over a year folks from Timnith going, is there a way to quantify dollar spent? So for every time you walk into a rec center, is it an $8 fee to swim, is it a, you know, is it a league that they're playing basketball in, what, you know, what kind of dollar amount is leaving Timnith going somewhere else that if here, we could, you know, recoup or bring back to this community?
And we have really good partnerships with the other recreation, I was an area director in Colorado for over 10 years, and so we're really close in the Colorado network, and I'm sure we can get that information from the Windsor Rec Center, from visitation and revenues, how they break that out, and the pro forma that I mentioned, which isn't quite ready yet, but very soon, will absolutely describe our best recommendations based on the market, based on even like the Windsor Rec Center and others, as well as options, you know, for staff and to consider as they look at cost recovery and ways to consider potentially operating a center if that's so chosen.
Got it, awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilor Jenkins.
Mayor Pro Tem. So I appreciate this fantastic report, I also agree on many points that the other council members said. You know, I think would be interesting to me, and maybe, Tom, I can reach out to you, is just maybe some demographics information of how people answered this and what demographics were involved, like, and how they answered, I think we have a, definitely a target market maybe for the recreation center, so that'd be interesting to see. What I also appreciated was some of these focus groups, so I appreciated the focus groups, I just have a question about that, when you guys did your focus groups, how were these focus groups selected, like the stakeholders and the focus groups, how did you kind of go out in the community, or how were these focus groups selected?
So Barry Dunn had four, they had kind of their four, four main ones that they were going after, one was, it's been, it's been a minute since we did those, but the other ones that we did, so we did sports organizations, so we reached out to NoCo's football, Fort Collins Baseball Club, Rapid Soccer, Arsenal Soccer, and we brought them all to the table to kind of see what they, what they were wanting and needing, just in general, as, just as a general community, since they use all of our stuff, not just, I mean, they have a lot of recreation programs, too, and so we really want to touch base with them, plus, we also reached out to the school district, and we got the principals, we all had a chance to attend, and we met with the school district to kind of see what their, what their needs were as well. So those are our big stakeholders that we work with on a daily basis as a Parks and Recreation Department, and then we used the four models that they did, one was specifically on the recreation center, one was a general, just a general Parks and Rec one, and then I want to draw a blank on the other two. One was with open space.
Trails.
Open space and trails, and then I think there was another one for programming.
So was their feedback relatively the same, because I know kind of like the programs focus, rec center, like, some of that, was that still the positive feedback that you're getting maybe from our community, was that supportive, this rec center in the same way with these focus groups?
Yeah, because the biggest thing that everybody needs is space, because it's, it's crowded all, all the way up and down I-25, there's, I mean, every inch of space is, like, people are really already wanting to get into Wildwing Park to use for space, so it's just, space for all sports is at a premium.
Okay, and just one more question, then I'll, I'll pass over to the mayor. Some of the, and I saw on some of your stakeholders and your focus groups, I know, was there any, like, we've got some local churches here and faith-based organizations, and then maybe any kind of the, were they contacted, because I know they're always looking for spaces, well, I know sometimes they use the Walker over here, any of those stakeholders in our community contacted for using those spaces as well?
No, we did not reach out to them specifically.
Okay, yeah, I just know they're always looking for space as well, so thank you.
But like I said, if we were to build a community recreation center, we're trying to think of all of those pieces, and so with a lot of concepts that we've been kind of going through, one of the main things is having some sort of a meeting space for up to 250 people as a potential for something that we could add to this community rec center.
Awesome, thanks, Tom.
All right, well, I want to thank Barry Dunn for all the work and the work that will continue here, as well as Director Xol and our staff, I know a lot of work has gone into this. Clearly, this just reaffirms what many of us have heard in the community, but I'm glad that we now have the data to back it up, that, you know, I would consider this a mandate from the, from the community. I think, you know, our next steps here is not should we do it, but how do we do it? How do we pay for it? Where do we put it? What amenities would be included? You know, is it just a rec center, or we're also trying to be responsive to some of the other information, like a desire for expanded open space and trails and land for conservation, things like that? So I really appreciate the effort that's gone into this, I appreciate the staff entertaining me, we, we're meeting now every other week to talk about things, and I know that that takes away from all the other important things you're doing, and including all the incredible programming that continues to go online every week, it seems like I'm getting information about new programming. Phil, you signing up for pickleball? Okay, good, so yeah, we have an agenda item tonight to kind of talk about next steps, I very much look forward to, I think in March, we're coming back to dig into some more detail on the post-master plan and some of the other stuff here, right?
Yeah, so I told Jason, I need to have the draft by March 18th, so we'll be ready for our work session on the 25th of March.
Wonderful, wonderful, council, anything before we move on?
So the, we will, like I said, so this presentation will go a little bit more in-depth onto what our next steps are, which is hiring a consulting firm called Beyond Your Base, and I'll go through the presentation as far as what the next steps are, and how do we get from where we're at now to potentially getting something on the ballot in November?
Very good, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, well, then we can stand adjourned for the work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 for our regular meeting. All right, I will call to order the Tuesday, February 11th, Timnith Town Council meeting. Mr. Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes, Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa. Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Very good. Everyone is present. Council, any requests to amend the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address council with matters related to town, which otherwise do not have an opportunity to comment. This evening, we do have two items. Those are the Land Use Code amendments, Land Use Code amendment and also the conditional use permit for the assisted living facility. If anyone here would like to speak on those matters, please wait until we call those. But I will ask, is there anyone here that would like to address council on any other matter? I don't believe anyone has signed up. So we will now move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening consists of two items, first being approval of the January 28th, 2025 Town Council minutes. And the second is Resolution Number Eight, Series 2025, a resolution approving the purchase of two 2025 Chevy Tahos from John Elway Chevrolet. Is there any requests to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to mayor and council reports. Begin this evening. Councilmember Jenkins, anything?
Just that I attended the most recent MPO priority meeting and MPO meeting. And it looks like there's good possibility that the I-25 and Mulberry or 14 interchange may go up on the priority list, but it's not been finalized. There is a million dollars already approved unless it's been frozen for a design study. And there is an existing environmental impact report that will be used. So, you know, fingers crossed, that could end up with some significant improvements in multimodal. There have been a number of fatalities and injuries around that, mostly pedestrian or bicycle. So I think one of the goals is to make that safer for everybody. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And thank you for your continued representation on that committee, along with our staff members that have been part of that. So Mayor Pro Tem, anything? Councilmember Lake?
We had our post-committee meeting last week and got to see the results of the, the survey, which we kind of looked at during the work session here. But I just wanted to let people know that we will have at least one youth position open for the committee coming up. And I'm not sure yet if we will have other positions available as well. But those who are interested will be able to go onto our website and apply to be part of the committee.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Holt?
I'm going to share a little note that I got today. A couple of us got from the executive director of Respite Care. It looks like Respite Care will be joining us as Timnith residents. They're breaking ground next week and will be hosting an event, a groundbreaking event on March 10th. I'm sure they'll have that all over their socials, but we welcome Respite Care to Timnith and excited to watch their building grow.
Great. Thank you. I'm excited for that. It'll be nice to welcome them to the community. I did happen to notice that our, the Timnith Middle High Cheer team took third place at Nationals in Florida. So congratulations to them for that, that performance. Yeah. Two weeks from today, we will be doing our State of the Town address. That'll be a little bit different this year. We've been working to produce a video, a State of the Town video. Appreciate all the council members and staff who contributed to that. So that'll be our first main agenda item is releasing that video. And then that will also be available, of course, through all of our online channels. So encourage folks to come and check that out. If you want to see the grand unveiling, please come here in person or otherwise check it out online. Anything else before we move on? Now move on to our regular business items. We have two of these this evening. When we go through these items, I will introduce the items. Staff will make a presentation. If we have an applicant, they may make a presentation. We will then go through questions, entertain a motion, have discussion, and then vote on these items. These items do not have a public hearing, and so there's not an opportunity for the public to comment on each of these this evening. Begin with Agenda Item 6A, Resolution Number Nine, Series 2025, Resolution Approving Public Engagement and Public Opinion Research Services Agreement with Beyond Your Base. Parks and Rec Director.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I want to bring before you a resolution approving a public engagement and public opinion research service agreement with Beyond Your Base. And basically what they were going to help us do is determine if the rec center is going to be a good fit for the community. And if so, what size and help us get it on the ballot if that's what we choose to do. So, so I'm requesting an approval of a bid waiver to enter it in an agreement with Beyond Your Base. It's a consulting group of Witten Company. During the public engagement phase of the post-master plan and recreation feasibility study, it was clear the community would support and wants a community recreation center. Beyond Your Base will provide election support for a community recreation center. They have worked on several recreation center projects and other recreation-related referenda, most notably Eaton. Beyond Our Basis is, is pretty much a one-man show and his name is Paul Hanley and he's the managing director of Beyond Your Base. He has 32 years of successful public engagement. In the last five years, he's gotten 41 successful referenda across the country, 22 of those in Colorado totaling 3.09 billion in funding. To bring on their services will be, it'll be a base contract of $45,000 for the consulting services. And then we'll have up to an additional $17,000 in hard costs such as letters, newsletters, mail survey, cross tabs, voter data, text messaging and stuff like that. So, and then there's some other additional outreach strategies. If you want to do some digital advertising or video, those will all be included as extra costs. So, but the base contract is 45,000. What they'll do is they'll provide us training, public policy training. They'll do voter analytics, timeline and budget, proposal development, task force, facilitation, messaging. They do all the creative digital work before, behind the scenes, direct mail, digital social media. They'll do some public opinion research to help us with the ballot language and also provide campaign support. This is just one example of what they've did in, where's this at? Lamont Park District, I believe this is in one of their most recent ones in Indiana. So what their plan is, is in February and March, they'll do a needs assessment. They'll define a proposal of a Plan A, Plan B. They'll do voter analysis. They'll be in tuned with the, the registered voters in, in our, in our, in our community. They'll recruit a task force. So they'll get community members to be a task force to help push this along and also to that, any kind of information we want to put out there to our community. So we can work hand in hand in providing a, a task force of citizens that will help get this and they'll help us create the core message. They'll do the community outreach, which is a, a letters, FAQs, presentations, videos. They'll do some media if we need to. They'll help us with website and social media. Here's kind of the, some of the, the skimmers and readers is what they call them is information that they can put out there for the public to review. They'll do the public opinion research and follow-up. That's May through June. Review results with the task force, finalize ballot question if needed, website updates and presentations. So they'll do a mail survey, which is all registered voters households includes fact sheets. And then they'll do some follow-up. Basically, they're going to make sure that whatever we put on the ballot, if that's what we choose, is going to have a good chance of being successful. So we can put all kinds of different things where we can put in a large, there's lots of components to the recreation center where we can put them all in there and see if there's, the community will engage in, in wanting all of those components. Or if we have to scale back because of cost and just try to gauge an overall comfortability with whatever we put out there. So we'll, we'll be pretty well, we'll have a pretty good idea going after this, this process. And then basically by August, we'll have that decision. You guys will have a decision to make whether we move forward or not, and we'll have the data to support one way or the other. So that's kind of what they do. And so if you have any questions, my recommendation is we approve a contract with Beyond Your Base and get this moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Council questions?
I don't have any at this time.
I'm sure the question will be asked, but seems like they have an extensive background. Was this the only group that we looked at or is there multiple groups that we looked at to accomplish this?
So this one was recommended by, from Kim from Slate. They have a proven track record. There's a couple of people within the industry that have used them. Due to timing, we were kind, I was kind of asked to fast track this, so I did not do a normal RFP process. And I'm not even sure if there's other firms out there that would even be able to provide that. So that's why we're asking for the bid waiver. They've got a strong history of getting things accomplished. And I think it would be in our best interest to move forward with this company. And I have, like you said, other area directors that have used them that speak highly.
I mean, 41 successful, three billion in funding, you know, that's a pretty good track record. As far as locally, you said Eaton.
Yes. So they were able to get, not only, they were able to form the rec district.
Yeah.
Get the board situated, put the ballot initiative on there and then got the funding for it all, all, all at once. So.
Awesome. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yep.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yeah. What's, what's the deadline for the November ballot?
I do not have that information. It said that we need to know by August. I don't know if.
So we just want to make sure we got all our ducks lined up in time to get it on the ballot.
Yep. And then if it were on the ballot, the county would coordinate that election. Is that correct, Melissa? Mayor Pro Tem?
So if, I just want to make sure the bid waivers to move this along. And if we didn't do November, would the next one be April? Is that what?
Correct.
And so that, that's what we're trying to make sure that, so the bid waiver tonight is to make sure we can make November. If we don't move this along, it'd be April of next year.
Correct.
Can we, can we talk about some risks of why that's not a good idea? Maybe you can answer that, Tom or Aaron of what are some inherent risks of why we should move this bid waiver along?
Well, I think inflation is always going to be a risk and there's a lot of volatility right now. Tariffs went into effect on metal just today. This building's going to have metal in it. So, I mean, I, I think it's a fair assumption. We will see significant inflation. And I think the longer we delay, there will be a cost to that. You know, I don't, I don't see a time where materials are going down. So they'll, they'll just continue to accelerate. So I think the faster we can move, the better, you know, and I, I think speed is an important aspect of this. I think to Tom's other point, this is a very specialized skill set. So I don't know how many firms would even be available to sort of replicate all the services we would be getting from Beyond Your Base. The ability to contract with one group slash really individual to have all those services provided, that's a unique opportunity and not a lot of folks doing that out in the field. So for those reasons, I think the recommendation for the waiver.
And a couple of other things is they have the voter data based off of the November elections. And they're really, the, the gauge voters are trying to get at is the 18 to 54 voters. And those ones usually come out during election cycles. Presidential cycles really bring out. So if we were to go in November, they actually have it down where they think if we have 1,763 votes is what we would need to pass a community recreation center. So they have the data that they can move behind by having it in November. I think it'd be their recommendation to not do April and go to the following November just because of what they can track data-wise through the.
Better turnout then?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and Aaron, going back to your point, we learned a lot with the police building, right? And that was a lot of cost savings that we had from that building by being prudent in that process of speeding that building along, right?
Yeah, I actually saw Brian Williamson walk in who could speak to this even better than me. But, you know, one thing I specifically remember to that project, we were still experiencing those shocks in the supply chain. And so we actually had to ask council for authorization to purchase trusses months in advance than we ever otherwise would have, knowing that that was a component that was just on such a long delay. And, and so the things just seemed to get more and more chaotic. And, and so I think, you know, I kind of alluded to this earlier, but generally going sooner is always better.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
And Melissa, just to clarify, if we didn't make the November election and did this next April, the town would be responsible for coordinating that election. Is that correct?
Yes, the town would be responsible for coordinating with the county. And if it's April, then yes, it would be the town.
And I mean, it's possible we may have some other ballot item that needs to go in April, but if this were the only single item, what would it cost us to run an April election?
Well, we will have seats up for election in April. It's in 2026.
Okay. So it's, so we will be running.
So we'll have to have one anyways.
We all been around for a year already? Time flies. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. All right, council, any other questions? Staff, anything else? Okay. This time, is there a motion to approve Resolution Nine, Series 2025, a resolution approving public engagement with Public Outreach Research Services Agreement with Beyond Your Base?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Jenkins. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We'll discuss, beginning with Councilman Jenkins.
Yeah, I think getting it on, getting it under our belt sooner rather than later is the right thing to do. I think the, the price seems very reasonable for the range of services that they're going to provide. They have the expertise and a good track record. So, and I agree, November is a better time to do it than, than April, just based on, on voter turnout. We'll get more, more voters participating in the decision, whatever, whatever the specifics are. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it.
Councilmember Holt, you seconded?
Yep. So, I mean, I would just say from our work session before this, I think it's overwhelming just, you know, on a 94 to six, just in the survey that the community wants this. I'm also of the belief that if, if there's a want and there's the ability and people are behind it, the sooner the better. I, I agree with that 100%. So I'm, I'll definitely be in favor and vote for this.
Councilmember Lake?
I agree with looking at the numbers of how many community members have said something about supporting it. I would just say that we just, I, I know our voter turnout for our local elections is actually pretty high. So I would say if for some reason something gets stopped up, I wouldn't put, you know, worry about that too much. I would rather us take our time and make sure that we're doing it adequately and efficiently and getting, you know, the feedback we need. And I do feel like contracting now will at least put us in the right direction to have that happen.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah. So I'm definitely going to be in support of this bid waiver. Looking through the experience and what this contractor has done, I also support this. I do think that we should move forward based on our work session. I agree with Councilman, Council Lady Lake. In this, in this, you know, if we don't, if we don't make it, I want to do it right, but I would like to push for November if that's a possibility.
I concur. As we saw in, in the work session, I really think there's a mandate from the community to move a rec center forward. There are certainly a lot of questions to be answered and I hope we can answer many of them before November, including how are we going to pay for this? The, the bank account right now, you know, will not allow us to pay for this. So I, I think it's likely that we will need to go to the voters with something.
it's likely that we will need to go to the voters with something in November. How big should this be? Where should it be? Is this just a rec center? Or does it also involve open space and trails? I, I think those are all questions to, to be answered. But approving this bid waiver is, is the first step in, in moving all that forward. So I appreciate the, the town's work, town staff's work in putting this together. Beyond Your Base seems like an exactly on point vendor to use for this. They have a demonstrated track record and the requested price seems absolutely reasonable, given the fact that, you know, we'll be talking fifty to a hundred million dollars or whatever to, to build a rec center. Any other discussion?
All those in favor of approving the resolution, approving public engagement and public opinion research services agreement with Beyond Your Base signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Okay, it is approved five zero. We'll now move on to item six B, Resolution ten, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the contract with Polarized, Polarized Water Solutions for the construction of the Timneth Reservoir Non-Potable Irrigation System Improvements. Also, Director Gasol.
Before you is the non-pot system over at Timoth Reservoir to irrigate the infrastructure that we have up there, mainly the event space grass and all of the surrounding areas on the, on the shoreline. So just to give you a little bit of history on the project. So in two thousand nineteen, the town drilled two groundwater wells to irrigate the event space and the picnic areas. In twenty twenty-one, the irrigation system was constructed and operational the entire season with no issues. In twenty twenty-two, midway through the season, sand started to infiltrate the system and started clogging and damaging sprinkler heads. In twenty twenty-two, we also added some sand separators were installed to try to mitigate the sand, and that was not successful. So from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, the town used potable water provided through the Fort Collins of the Water District. We had a hydrant that was attached to the water tower. And we were paying a premium price for that water. In twenty twenty-four, an underground system was designed to filter out the sand in order to use the two existing wells. The town put out an RFP to construct early in twenty twenty-three. But that project, that RFP came back, the bids were over budget as well. And as we were working with the selected contractor on price, we ran out of time prior to the irrigation season. And so we never bought the contract before council. Late June of twenty twenty-four, the town was notified that we would not be able to use the potable water system from Fort Collins of the Water District. And we had to scramble, as you guys remember, last summer, right before the Fourth of July to put together a temporary system. And we were able to use that system and we were able to really kind of hone in on what works and what doesn't work with that system. And we had pretty much all summer where we worked on that system. So in twenty twenty-five, a new system was designed based on the temporary system. So at the time of the budget process, we didn't have a design because we were still evaluating the temporary system that we were using in order to come up with a better system. And so we made a lot of changes to that, the original design. We brought it above ground before we put it out to bid. So just for a little bit of a description here, you can see that we have, the, the blue line is the irrigation line that runs up to the green area is what we're trying to irrigate. You can see the two wells. We have the north well, which is closer to the reservoir and the south well. Both of those feed into the system that we're trying to, to run. The proposed system has been designed to be flexible with redundancy built in to take certain components offline for maintenance and still be operational. The system components has two twenty-one thousand gallon above ground enclosed storage tanks. This allows for the system to run at a lower and stable flow rate, which will reduce the agitation of the sand in the well, hopefully providing less sand that we need to filter out. We will have four separate filtration points. Each has a, each catches a different, different sized micron. The bigger, the closer it is to where the wells, the, the, the larger that it catches, all the way down to one micron at the end. We will use an electrical pump to push the water up into the irrigation system out to the event space. It also included telemetry system that will link all of the individual devices together and operates the system. It also allows for the staff to run and observe the system remotely. We won't need to be on site. And the majority of the system will be above ground for ease of maintenance. It will be fenced in, but also by having it above ground, the other system was all below ground, which caused some issues with the, the construction piece was getting kind of costly because of the groundwater there. But having an above ground system makes it easier for maintenance. But in addition, if for some reason we were to lose our lease, we would be able to sell off that equipment since it's not a permanent fixture. So. So the town issued an invitation for bid for the construction of the twenty twenty-five Timoth Reservoir Non-Pot System Improvements in December of twenty twenty-four. We received seven bids, five of which were deemed responsive and were evaluated for price and qualifications. The lowest bid submitted by Polarized Water Solutions was deemed competent and is recommended for the contract. Here's the proposed budget. It's four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the Polarized Water Solutions. We have an estimate for materials testing, the telemetry upgrades and install of the existing system. And then we have the construction administration and bidding, which is the hourly estimate. This was approved as part of the contract for TST that we use for twenty twenty-four that we carried over. It was one of the work orders. For a sub total of five hundred eight thousand, five hundred eight thousand, five hundred dollars with a contingency of forty-eight thousand, three fifty, with a total project estimate of five hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. The original budget was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That was kind of a stab in the dark because we were still working out the temporary system. And that's why there's such a price disparity is because we didn't really know the scope of the project at that time. So here's kind of a schematic. I don't know if you can see it that well, but this is kind of what we're looking at with the system coming in. So.
Thank you, sir. Counsel questions?
Tom, do you remember how much we spent this past couple of years on trying to get the system fixed and the potable water that we're using? Do you remember how much that was? I know it was a lot. I just don't remember. Maybe Lisa, you know, it was quite a bit. And I was just hoping maybe how long would it take to return on the system? It was, it was a lot. And I'm, I'm thinking this will probably pay itself off pretty quickly.
Yeah, I do believe so. So I want to, I, I'm, any numbers I would have, I don't have the exact number. So I don't want to hold my, hold my neck out there.
I was kind of remembered. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Yeah. But using the, the not, the, using the water that, from the wells is significantly cheaper than using potable water. So.
Do you have an estimate of the operational costs once it's built?
Well, it's more or less just the staff time.
I mean, it's gonna, you got filters that probably have to be replaced or, and electricity to do the pumping, right?
Yeah, I, I don't have those numbers. No.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, I mean, my question is, is similar to Mayor Protem's question is, this is eliminating the trial and error, right? The costly trial and error that we've gone through the past several years. You're comfortable with this, that this is a tried and true system that will prevent us from having more trial and error? Is this kind of the end all be all? And if so, how long will it last? What is something like this project? Is this a ten year till we have to redo it? Is it a lifetime, just normal maintenance? How long will this?
We'll have the general maintenance of, of, of the, the filters, just like any other kind of mechanical systems. Like I said, we have some redundancy that we can take certain off to do the maintenance that's needed for these pumps and, or for these filters. But this should be, I mean, we, we learned quite a bit from the temporary system that we use. So originally, we have a baffling tank that was supposed to settle the water. That didn't really work. We figured a lot of that sand was from turning those pumps on and off, on and off. And this will have us run a nice even flow, which will hopefully prevent the agitation. We're pretty confident in this system that this is, this is the long-term solution moving forward.
And I guess my counteractive question to that is, what's the alternative if we don't?
Well, we run the risk of using the potable water system and, and wasting the money that we've already spent on, on the drills. We bought, we bought into the, the puter augmentation for the rights to use that water.
Yeah.
And so we would just be walking away from that. And I think we're still on the hook for, how many years are we still on the hook for, with the puter augmentation? Or is it only for the water we used?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Just one other question, since the, the sand and the volume, the sand was the biggest problem to the well system. Do you, and you believe it was due to high volumes of pumping and turning off and on. Will you have the ability to alter the flow rates if you need to adjust the, how fast the pump is pumping water to keep sand out?
Correct. So we'll be running it for a lower volume at a, at a longer period of time.
So you can run it overnight, fill the tanks and then?
Correct.
Use it high volume when you need it.
Yeah, because we'll be filling up the forty, forty-two thousand gallons. And we, one watering is about twenty to twenty-two thousand gallons for one full on watering of the entire area.
Thank you.
What's the implementation schedule if this is approved?
So by going with Polarized Water Solutions, they actually have, they'll be able to meet our timelines of getting it ready and up and running by, by May.
So that'll be fully functional for this summer?
Yep.
Council, any other questions?
And we do have, for some reason, if there were, we do have a backup plan to be able to rent those tanks for a temporary period of time. But those tanks are the exact same tanks that were the ones that we're purchasing. If they're not here, we could roll those. It'll be, it'll be easier to just install and, and put the new ones in once they get here. I think the lead time for those tanks are probably the only thing that would be somewhat under consideration. But Polarized Water Solutions says they have a direct line to the manufacturer and they guarantee they'll be here on time.
Then is there a motion to approve the resolution approving the contract with Polarized Water Solutions?
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion beginning with Mayor Protem.
Yep. I definitely support this as a, I know in my time on council, it's been something that I've seen over and over again. I support this as a viable option to not use potable water that is very expensive. And I appreciate staff's time putting together this solution.
Councilmember Lake?
No further comment.
Councilmember Holt?
No, I think it's just, it's, it's eye opening, right? It's a beautiful piece of property. It's nice green grass and it's expensive just to keep it that way. So I know how much this town and the community loves its open space and its ability to use those recreational spaces. And I think this is the most fiscally responsible way to keep that going without potential, you know, failure points along the way. So I'm in support of it.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of this in, in large part because it's a non- potable system as opposed to potable water, which is getting harder to come by and more expensive. So I think this is a smart move for the town. And I just wish we could see more potable water usage across the entire town for landscaping. So I'm in favor of it.
I'm also in support. You know, last summer was very frustrating for a number of reasons and including some of the water district challenges. And then the challenges with the system, the Fourth of July is always was a fantastic event. The weather couldn't have been better, but, but the grass was brown and that, that detracted from it a little bit. So I appreciate the work that, that went into this, the troubleshooting. This seems like a solution that makes sense. So I will vote for it. With that, all those in favor of approving the resolution, approving the contract of Polarized Water Solutions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. It carries unanimously five zero. We will now move on to our two public hearing items, similar to these other items. We will have a staff presentation, applicant presentation if, if applicable. And then before we move on to questions, we will solicit any public comment on the matter. Counsel questions on the item, a motion, and then discussion, and finally a vote. Begin with ordinance number six, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance approving amendment number seventeen, Article five of the Timneth Land Use Code, public hearing. Ms. Graves?
Good evening. So this is an ordinance approving amendment number seventeen, Article five of the Timneth Land Use Code, a amendment related to parking. As a reminder, land use codes are living documents that should be reviewed and updated regularly. And these updates allow us to continue to refine and clarify our regulations, provide greater predictability for the development community and residents, keep pace and respond to changes and stay current with guiding policy and best practices. So this proposed code update came about during a review of a development proposal that's next on the agenda for a proposed assisted living facility. And during this review, it became evident that our parking requirements were not in line with industry standards. And we're much higher than our neighbors and the I T E Parking Generation Manual. So just to look at, here are our current requirements. So we have them in two different use categories, residential uses and then public facilities. So this is somewhat confusing when we're reviewing applications. And we feel that this, this ratio would result in more supply than there is demand. So the goal of this code update is to really right-size the parking requirement. We don't want there to be an undersupply and we don't want there to be an oversupply. So we surveyed ten nearby communities to understand how assisted living facilities and similar uses are categorized and compared the ratios with those communities. We also looked at data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and reviewed parking data from similar projects. So the community comparison, we looked at ten different communities and their parking ratios ranged from point one seven to point five nine stalls per bed compared to our point eight two to one point three six stalls per bed, depending on what use category we were using. Four of the communities just require special studies because there's just a lot of variability with this use. The I T E Parking Generation Manual for weekly, weekday peak period indicates an average of point three nine parking stalls per bed. So our requirement is about two to three and a half times that average peak hour requirement. And at the eighty-fifth percentile, which is a pretty conservative ratio, the requirement is point five eight parking stalls per bed. And our requirement is one and a half to about two times that requirement. And then we looked at similar projects, which the development team gave to us. And these are not, the, the numbers shown here are parking stalls that have been provided. So they, they kind of exceed what is required in those communities, but they're on the ground. And they range from point five to point eight stalls. And so this averages to about point six four. So that fit really nicely with Loveland standard, which is point five nine spaces per bed and the I T E eighty-fifth percentile, which is point five eight spaces per bed. So our proposed requirement is one per three beds plus one per employee on the largest shift. So Planning Commission heard this at their last meeting and recommended approval by unanimous vote of four zero. And our department recommends approval of the proposed land use code.
Very good. Thank you. And I guess this is a land use update. We probably don't have an applicant as, as the town is bringing this forward. So at this time, we'll move to public comment. Ms. Pierce Garcia, has anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
No.
Very good. Is there anyone present who did not sign up but would like to talk parking? Very good. Is there anyone present who did not sign up but would like to talk parking? I see no one. So we will move on now to council questions.
Yeah, so I know you got data from surrounding towns. Did you get any feedback about how things were working out in terms of under, over, or just right supply?
With with facilities and neighboring communities, we did from the development team that's proposing this this project here in Timneth. They have a project in Broomfield and I believe in Colorado Springs. And they what they're proposing is in line with what they have at those facilities and they feel like it is the right amount of parking.
Good to know. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just had one question, which I did note that other jurisdictions use use a similar deal, but this metric of one per employee on the largest shift feels to me like something that may be speculative, maybe hard to predict and hard to verify. That we're kind of taking the the facility at their word. What's what's our thought on that?
Yeah, we certainly do. So that's a part of the review process. We do ask them how many employees total they'll have and then how many on kind of say the largest shift. So we are taking them at their word. We're not really going in and verifying that. But certainly they want parking spaces for their employees. They don't want to spill out onto the streets. So I think they have a good gauge of what they need for their employees and visitors.
As far as we can tell, I think both Loveland and Fort Collins had similar based on employee level that's been working out okay for them.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Protemp.
So looking at this, Logan, does this mean in the end there's less? Do we get more beds in this case? Like, does this give the the developer the opportunity to have more beds? Is there a balance where this will come out? Like in some of these places where you saw the developer where they had Broomfield, Colorado Springs? Is there somewhere this all balanced out for them? Did this give them three more beds? Like if you were to look, was there any math behind it? That if we ran a Timneth number to where they might be in that case?
We didn't do that. We we could certainly calculate the amount of square feet of parking that we'd be saving that the difference. But essentially, if you're not required to put in that parking, that that area of space can go to open space, can go to more beds, can go to amenities for the residents. So I'm sure it's allocated to those other areas.
So in in our land use code, these type of facilities, is there, tell me more about the requirements for open space. So like what is our requirement for open space? And could that be used in this case instead of parking now?
Certainly. So they they are meeting the requirement for open space. I believe it's twenty five percent of the site. So they could, and I think they're exceeding that. So they are giving providing more amenities for the residents.
Great. So so when we make changes like this, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to add more traffic or more people. It could, we we can encourage developers to actually provide more open space, more care, right? It's not, it's not necessarily just always. I don't know, more density.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And this may seem obvious, but I just want to confirm that this is the case. Reason that you need fewer parking spaces at a facility like this is that the population is less likely to have as many cars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, at this point, is there a motion to approve an ordinance approving amendment seventeen, Article five of the Timneth Land Use Code?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll discuss beginning with Councilmember.
I think there's a lot of the the questions that Mayor Protemp was was going down. It's just is kind of my belief too. I think a lot of things get accomplished by doing this. We've had it brought to us several times before on the cost of just a parking space in general. So I think it'll lower the cost. It'll attract more businesses to build here in Timneth because of the cost. Not going to go down the full rabbit hole, but I think the evaluation of this as a whole and our overall parking on multiple different genres, not just assisted living, would be probably beneficial for us to attract the right businesses. But yet, I think being super cautious on overcrowding, traffic, you know, cars on the street, which which we don't want. So but I think the amount of effort that went into the studies, the the proof is, you know, glaring to me where it's a it's an approval on my part.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins.
No, I'm I'm in support of this. I don't think it makes sense to have the number of parking spaces by existing code for for this kind of facility. My mother lives in a facility similar to this, and I can tell you there aren't that many cars. Even with the reduced parking, there's still quite a few open spaces available twenty four seven. So I think it's an appropriate change in our land use code.
Councilmember Lake.
I would just like to echo what Jeremy mentioned about maybe using this as an opportunity to look at all of our parking regulations going forward. And I think this is a great first step with that. And seeing as other communities have used similar numbers and have not had issues, I feel pretty comfortable moving forward with this.
Mayor Protemp Wagner.
I'm also going to be voting in support of this. I I do appreciate the staff work going out and basically looking at the market on this. I also appreciate the I T E, you know, benchmarking on this. That was very helpful as well. You know, I think as we do this, I definitely want to see you know, this used as a way to make our community, in a sense, look better, more open space. So I'll I'll definitely be supporting this and that idea that we're just not filling in with it. We're just making things better for our community and more open space. So I support it.
There's nothing more frustrating than not having adequate parking. And especially when we're dealing with an older population, I would hate for an older person to not be able to find parking and be able to get into their facility. That said, there is also nothing more wasteful than parking that never gets utilized. And so I appreciate the effort that went into looking at this from a data perspective. I'm confident that the formula that was come up with here balances those those two interests in a responsible way, and I will support it. Any other commentary? All those in favor of the ordinance approving amendment number seventeen, Article five of the Timneth Land Use Code signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose nay? All right, it has passed five zero. We'll now move on to our final agenda item of the evening, item seven B, resolution number eleven, series twenty twenty five. Resolution approving the conditional use permit for Harmony Assisted Living and Memory Care Community. Mr. Kemper.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Let me just get this shared real quick. All right. Yes, this is an item for the consideration of a conditional use approval for an assisted living facility located within the Harmony subdivision. The applicant applicant is Elton Development, represented by Mike Chittister and J R Engineering and Planning, represented by Ken Merritt. This application was properly noticed in accordance with table two point one of the town's land use code, which requires a posted mailed and published notice. The subject properties are Lot One and tracks A and B of the Harmony subdivision's second filing, second amendment, located at the northeast corner of Club Drive and Harmony Road. These parcels make up approximately six point four acres of the Harmony subdivision. And the site slopes downward from the northern high point of the site to the south and features the Lake Canal ditch along the eastern property line here, represented on the image to the right, eighty foot easement is included within that that property to the adjacent boundary, providing a natural buffer between the property and the adjacent residential lots in Harmony Club seventh filing. The property is zoned commercial mixed use and lies within a thousand feet of Harmony Road, which would make it subject to the Harmony Corridor overlay district and is in compliance with the future land use designation of commercial mixed use in the town's comprehensive plan. Just a brief overview of kind of how are the town's table of permitted uses reads. Any use that is has a symbol of a P refers to a use that is permitted by right, subject that it is meeting the criteria of the town's standards. If it is represented with a PC, it is a use that is permitted with conditions. Those are typically predetermined within our code and reviewed at those applications. If it has a C, it is referred to a conditional use and must be approved by town council. So the use of an assisted living facility is permitted with conditions in the C M U zoning district. However, in the Harmony Corridor overlay district, it does require conditional use approval to ensure that it aligns with the corridor's intent and the surrounding property mitigates any adverse impacts to those surrounding properties. So in accordance with that table, it is listed as a conditional use within Harmony Corridor. The conditional use is a review is identified for having a unique or specific characteristics creating a greater than expected impact. So it is the council's discretion to approve the use and add any conditions they feel appropriate for that specific use. And I just wanted to briefly highlight. So the use of assisted living refers to a type of housing designated for senior individuals that are mentally or physically limited, needing assistance with daily activities but do not require intensive medical medical care. So in a broader sense, they help with daily activities such as bathing, dressing, eating and mobility. There is often onsite support for personal care and medical supervision. And as mentioned earlier, so there would be a higher demand for emergency services within uses such as this. However, there is a lower demand on parking as most of those residents rarely drive within these facilities. So the proposal in front of us is a use that includes a one hundred and forty five thousand square foot assisted living facility, which would have one hundred and fifty units, one hundred and twenty six of those would be assisted living apartments and twenty four of those would be for memory care suites. What we will review this against within the town's land use code is section two nine eight eight, which is the conditional use review criteria. I will briefly go over those. One being that the proposed use shall be compliant with all regulations with the applicable zoning district unless accompanied by a variance or separate action. The condition conforms with the character of the area, the same zoning districts which is located shall have no more adverse impacts on health, safety and welfare of the surrounding properties. Third, adequate utilities are provided. Fourth, that the proposed conditional use will not substantially impair the appropriate use or development of the adjacent property and that there are no significant traffic issues created. So I think it's important to note that this is the approval of the use itself. So this is not approving the site plan. However, with that said, I think it's important and it's a requirement to have a concept shared so that we have an understanding of the orientation and use of the site in reviewing that condition. So the site itself is proposing, as I said, one hundred forty five thousand square foot facility. And its design features a two story throughout that would measure thirty three feet in height. Step back partial from a third floor measuring forty nine feet and ten inches. That measurement would be to the top of the stairwell. I think Ken can touch on this a little bit more of what that height would be for that third level. It is however, it is meeting the fifty foot height requirement of the C M U district. The third story is set back approximately one hundred and eighty feet from Harmony Corridor and one hundred thirty feet from Club Drive. So within the site plan, there would be one ingress egress off of Club Drive that was already predetermined. And there would be a secondary emergency access only just for the use of emergency access if it was needed within the site. So as you'll see, it's oriented fronting Harmony Road with parking surrounding that building. Site amenities include parking, landscaping, lighting and a soft surface trail, resident gardens, gathering spaces, outdoor seating and an internal courtyard. So conceptually, the application is adhering to the town's dimensional standards for the C M U district. It is also compliant at this time for the Harmony Corridor setback. Again, this would be subject with the Harmony Corridor design standards and applicable dimensional standards of the land use code should it move forward with the site plan. So in staff's summary of findings, we have reviewed it against the land use code and found it to be in compliance with the conditional use review criteria in the following ways. It does comply with the standards of the underlying C M U zoning district in Harmony Corridor overlay. It is also based on what is proposed within the design and materials, in addition to what the Harmony Corridor standards would require. We feel that it is a complement to the Harmony subdivision's residential character, which would also blend with the nature of the Harmony Corridor and those commercial uses permitted within it. The location and size we felt is appropriate along Harmony Road, which is a principal arterial well suited for an institutional use and offers that transition from the residential types that are within the surrounding area currently and the potential for commercial and and institutional uses that could go within the the adjacent commercial zoning districts. Third, that the proposal ties into infrastructure construction within the Harmony subdivision that currently exists. We have reached out to the service and utility providers that reviewed this and they felt that there was they were in substantial compliance and they had no outstanding concerns. Again, they will be a referral agency once this is moves forward with the site plan application to ensure compliance with all their standards. Fourth, that the conditional use does not substantially impair the development of the adjacent properties. Again, it is compatible with the other C M U zone district to the west of this site. And also those utility and service providers felt that this would be able to service this site and not impact or or limit the development of those commercial properties as well. And then lastly, there is no significant traffic issues that we feel would be created. Obviously, with a vacant lot, any development would increase increase and create more traffic within it. However, it does meet the traffic letter that or study that was created for the Harmony subdivision and will be continued to be evaluated in the following following steps. This item was brought forth to Planning Commission at the December seventeenth meeting where they recommended approval with the of the conditional use with a five oh vote. There was an additional two public comments that were submitted to the town that were also included in your packet for review. With that, we are recommending recommending approval of this Harmony Assisted Living and Memory Care conditional use with the with two conditions, one being that the site lighting shall not exceed three thousand Kelvin threshold in color temperature and be designed to limit light spill and glare to adjacent uses. Currently, the town uses, what is it? Currently, the town uses, what is a bit of an old-fashioned measurable being foot candles, using the ability of Kelvins, I think helps with energy efficiency. It would help limit any light pollution to any adjacent property. Increased, and two, increased evergreen plantings along the sites, East River Moundry, were possible to provide year-round screening. So that would be as a site plan to come forward with additional plantings where feasible to help limit that exposure. With that, I will turn it over to Ken for his presentation.
Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Good evening, Council.
I first see you. Good to see you. I would knew that by now. My name's Ken Merritt with JR, planners, engineers, and landscape architects representing the applicants this evening. Joining me this evening is also Mike Chitister with Elton Development, Liz Peterson with HCM Architects, and Byron Collins with Harmony LLC. I'd like to ask Mike to come up to make some opening comments and introductions and then I'll, Liz and I'll come back for.
Mayor, Council members, great to be with you today. My name is Mike Chitister, representing the applicant today, Elton Development. Just to give, I wanted to just give a little bit about who we are, about the project, about why we're here before you today. And then I'll have Ken go through some of the more technical questions that, that the project brings. So our company, Elton Development, a Boise-based company, we're based in Meridian, Idaho, just west of Boise. We work in the Intermountain and Pacific Northwest and, you know, we, in those markets, we just looked for areas. We had the, our operator had just started working in Broomfield, a new project there, and, and so we started to look in this area with them. We looked all over northern Colorado and really wound up at this site and we'll, we'll tell you a little bit about why. Important team members, Ken has been, you know, he knows Timnuth and has been able to guide us through this process. HCM is our architect based in Denver, and so we knew we needed some local knowledge to help us on this project. Another important member of our team is not here today, it's our operator. We are a real estate development company, but the, these projects only work based on how well they're run and the experience the residents have, right? And so you can have a magnificent building, but if it's poorly run, you don't really have a successful project. Stellar Senior Living is our operator, they are based in Salt Lake City. This gives you an idea of some of their experience, they're really in the, in the Pacific Northwest, in, in the western United States, I would say. About 30 communities, that number is growing, and, and we just feel like they're an excellent operator and, and they'll be an integral part of this, of this project. One of the reasons we, you know, we, when we look at a new market, we, you look at a lot of data and you try and determine, really if there's a need, you don't want to go into a place where there just isn't demand for the product. And we, we like using a consultant who loves to tell us no, meaning he's, he takes a hard look at things and, and he's very critical of, of sites. And we like that, right? We want someone to tell us what the truth is. And he, his site was, his report was glowing about this area, you know, some of the quotes are there, but one of the strongest senior housing markets we've found in the last five years. And so he felt that, and, and that there certainly is demand. Earlier today, I walked a project that is, will be a competitor for us, just to see it and get to know them, and they were very generous in doing so. And their comment today, this was about three hours ago, was, you know, you're mainly doing assisted living and memory care, you'll have no problem filling in. So it just feels like there is still a lot of demand in this area. The type of community, you know, sometimes people say senior, senior living, assisted living, and, and you imagine a, a project that's, you know, there's one TV in a common room and everyone's watching Matlock and, you know, just a warm microwave tray of food. That's not, that's not what we're having. This, this slide gives you an idea, but these are, these are intended to be places that are active, they're beautiful, they're engaging. And, and so our project will certainly have that and, and you're, you're really focusing on making a place that people want to be. And then, I mean, the reason we're here mainly is because of Harmony. We, we toured a lot of sites and we, we felt like, you know, just driving through Harmony for the first time, you have a golf course, you have, the amenities are above and beyond what you need, the landscaping islands, the, it just, it's an above and beyond type of community, so we were impressed by that. And then also, we, you know, the, the quality is, is very high. And so, you know, we had, to be totally honest with you, there are easier places to develop in this community. If I go west of the freeway, there are some sites that are flat and they're, they're zoned and they're easy, but we felt like here we were going to just drop our project into an existing community, into an amazing place as opposed to just being next to, you know, some business. So that's why we're here. And in some ways, it's making it harder on ourselves. You know, the, the, the landowners, the, those who've developed Harmony have very high standards for us. We're, we're not going to, you know, this, this project will have four-side architecture, there's not going to be, you know, the backside of the building that, you know, you don't make as, as beautiful. The expectations are very high and we're, we, we welcome that. But it, it's because we, we want to be a part of, of this community. So that gives you an idea, I think, of who we are and what we're trying to accomplish here. And I'll turn it back to Ken.
Thanks, Mike. So I think we're all pretty familiar with the Harmony development, but just by way of orientation, north is to the top of the screen. Property is located at the northeast corner of Harmony Road and Club Drive. It's approximately 6.4 acres in size and it's zone CMU, commercial mixed use. Now, this is not the only commercial mixed use property within Harmony. In fact, it represents only 10% of the total land area of, of CMU property within the Harmony Club. And if you look at the bright pink area is our proposed site and those faded back pink areas are actually the remaining portions of the CMU zone property. The, the CMU property was actually strategically located so as to provide a buffer between Harmony Road and the estate residential development to the north. So that's one of the key planning aspects that took place on this project in its early stages to make sure there was adequate buffer along the Harmony Road corridor. The proposed land use is assisted living and memory care. Both are permitted uses with conditions, as, as Chad had pointed out, but due to their location and proximity to Harmony Road, they're actually also subject to the Harmony Road, or excuse me, the Harmony Corridor Overlay District. So we need to comply with the standards and they're, those standards are sort of over and beyond the, the required zoning standards in site design as well as architecture. So with this application of a conditional use permit, we were not required to do a transportation analysis, although I felt unprepared to come here without some knowledge of what the traffic impacts might be. So our transportation department took a look at this project and with the site plan, development plan submittal, we'll actually be submitting a complete TIS. But we did look at this, the transportation that would be generated, traffic that would be generated with this particular use. And what we found is that the average AM PM peak hour and the overall trip, overall daily trips counts are about 30% of what it would be if this was a standard multifamily residential development. And it would be only 25% if this was a commercial development of equal size. Simply stated, the folks that will live here and utilize this site just don't drive very much. There will be a, a van, a community van that will drive residents to shopping and various activities in the community, but simply they don't drive very much. So I want to kind of take a moment to go over some of the site design strategies on this project that, that Liz and I and, and Mike sort of looked at in order to come up with the best site design opportunities for the project. The site is accessed directly from Club Drive, only 200 feet from the intersection of, of Harmony Road. This is important to note because residents and guests and the public don't need to drive all the way through the Harmony development in order to get to this facility. Within 200 feet of the signal at Harmony Road, they access the site to a, to a very attractive entrance to the property. The other interesting aspect of this property is that there's actually a considerable amount of grade difference between our north boundary line and the Harmony Road right-of-way. Now, normally, this might be considered a constraint on a project like this with a large building, but actually, this was a great opportunity for us. What that allowed us to do, that elevational difference, is tuck the building into the existing grade, thereby essentially lowering the building about seven to eight feet from our relative, from the elevation of our north boundary line and the Club Drive roundabout. This, the building is made up of, of both a two-story structure and a three-story structure. The two-story building mass is used along Harmony Road to provide a more human scale adjacent to the town's regional trail. And the three-story building mass occurs on both the north and west side and a little bit of the east side of the building, where the building height can be minimized because of this grade difference and our ability to tuck it into grade. So essentially, our three-story building mass in the rear of the building becomes more like a two to two and a half story building mass because of our ability to, to tuck it into, into the, the, the landform. Next, I'd like to talk about some of the key site design aspects of this site. As I mentioned, the site is accessed from Club Drive. There will be a pedestrian-friendly auto court on the west side of the building, which leads to a covered drop-off area directly adjacent to the main entrance of the building. The Harmony Road and Club Drive streetscape will be enhanced with extensive landscaping of trees, shrubs, grasses, ground covers, and earthen berms to help buffer the residents from Harmony Road, lights and traffic noise along Harmony Road. And, and we believe this, this approach of placing the building so that is, it is building forward design adjacent to Harmony Road will actually help to further beautify the Harmony Road gateway corridor. Also present on this, on the concept site plan are an extensive series of walking paths, gardens, a natural, a nature viewing area, as well as a public garden, excuse me, gathering plaza, which will provide for active open space onsite. If you look to the east side of the building, which is the right-hand side on your image, you'll notice there's a nature viewing area. This will be an area where visitors and guests can come and sit on a bench or on some boulders and view some of the raptors, which typically roost in the 100-year-old cottonwood trees that will be preserved along the south side of the Lake Canal. A little bit further to the south and directly adjacent to the east side of the building is a gal, a public gathering space, which is one of the requirements of the Harmony Corridor Overlay District. This location is, is prime access to the Harmony, Harmony Road Regional Trail, which is only a few steps away from the public gathering space. And then on the west side of the building, there's a mountain viewing area. There are some tremendous views in the west, on the west side of this building. We wanted to take advantage by creating a small seating area where people could come out and sit on a, on a sunny winter day, sit out and get it out into the sun, take advantage of these dramatic views to the west to our mountain vistas. In addition to these outdoor active open space areas, as Chad mentioned, there is a requirement for both open space of the whole as well as active open space, open space that can actually be used by the residents and by the public. In addition to the active open space that I described around the perimeter of the site, there's also two significant courtyards for the residents. The assisted living courtyard that is surrounded by the building on all four sides, I think Mike said, four-sided architecture. Well, in reality, this is eight-sided architecture in order to surround the courtyard. And then the memory care courtyard, which is on the north portion. All of these, these courtyards, as well as the out, the perimeter amenities, all provide for active open space. And then finally, Pooter Valley Fire asked us when we were going through some design opportu, uh, design alternatives with them to provide a secondary emergency vehicle access directly from Harmony Road. This is not a public access drive, this would be an emergency access drive that would be controlled, would not go over bollards, would only be for emergency vehicle access in the event of emergency vehicles not being able to access directly on the west side of the building off of Club Drive. Now, as I mentioned, this use, the assisted living and memory care is a permitted use with conditions in the zone district, CMU zone district. But due to its proximity, it also has another level of design requirement, the Harmony Corridor Overlay District. And one of the prime tenants of the corridor district is to ensure that this project, the Harmony assisted living development, will create a high-quality, human-scale development along the Harmony Road corridor, which we believe it will be, and we believe it'll further enhance the Harmony Corridor and provide a significant architectural gateway once the building and the site is complete for the town of Timnuth, for those folks that are traveling westbound on, on Harmony Road. Additionally, there are setback requirements. Our proposed building of, meets the 50-foot building setback for Harmony Road and meets the building requirement of the overlay district. There's also some standards related to parking as, to minimize parking between the Harmony Road right-of-way and the building face. In fact, our development has no parking between the Harmony Road right-of-way and the building face. The only thing that exists between Harmony Road and our architectural south elevation is our trees, landscape, and a soft path, which will allow residents to actually circulate all the way around 360 degrees around the perimeter of the building. Active open spaces, I mentioned, is a requirement as well. We have 21% active open space, which includes those areas of open space around the outer perimeter of the building as well as the courtyards that we discussed. We have 21% active open space and the requirement is 5%. Finally, and this is the boring stuff, but I need to go through it. The metrics for the project, as I mentioned, the project's 6.4 acres in size. There are, there is one building lot and two open space tracks. The building lot, Lot 1, is approximately 5.4 acres. The open space tracks are approximately an acre. The proposed use is assisted and congregant care as defined by the town's land use code. The building square footage, total building square footage is approximately 145,600 square feet, which creates a floor area ratio of 0.52 FAR. Now, in the CMU district, the floor area ratio that's permitted in this district is 2.0 floor area ratio FAR. So we're 25% of what's permitted in this zone district. Total number of living units is 150 units total, 126 of which are assisted living units comprised of some studios, several studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. And there are 24 memory care, which are studio units. The ground floor area of the building, this would be just the ground floor area of the building, the footprint of the building on the ground is 1.3 acres or 21% of the site. building, the footprint of the building on the ground is 1.3 acres or 21% of the site. Private drives and parking, which constitute the impervious area of the site, is approximately 1.3 acres or 20%. And as I mentioned earlier, our open space is 3.7 acres, 58% of this site is open space. That does include the two courtyards, the assisted care and memory care courtyard. And our parking now complies with the recently approved parking modification. In fact, we exceed the requirement. We have 122 spaces, of which 116 are standard spaces, and there are six accessible spaces on-site. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I want to let Liz do the fun stuff, talk about the architecture.
Hi, I'm Liz Peterson. I'm an architect for Hord Copland-Mock. I'm a principal and the design lead in our senior living studio in our offices in Denver. So I'm just going to walk you through the sort of visioning for the building and the concepts for the architecture that was included in the package for your reference. So this, the top view talks to the entry. So that's always, no matter whether it's your first time on the site or you live here, that's a really important part of senior living is the entry sequence. This building particularly uses a lot of the design trends that you see in senior living, where it's a lot of hospitality-based, more urban kind of character to it. So this project is using all of those cues. With that, some of the materials we use are complementary to what you see in the Harmony Master Plan, as well as in Timneth, as well as in what we see in senior living, a lot of tactile, warm, stone materials, that wood, you know, complement with some metals, all of those things that you see typically here, especially in the western states. As Ken described, our massing is such that it transitions to three stories right here near our entry feature. The entry itself, when you enter the building, there's a two-story component, again, very popular, both in hospitality and senior living. This project's no exception to that. And then on the lower image, you see some of the two-story massing that Ken was referencing that's along Harmony Road. So the architecture gets quieter, I think is a good word to put for as you go along The top-left view shows a little bit different perspective of that entry. You can see the third story, where there's a sort of a sunset terrace or a deck up there for the residents to come out and really enjoy the outdoors. The lower view shows how the building steps. So there's a lot of articulation and massing changing in this building, even though it's two and three stories. It still has a nice, strong language that helps to break it down and be respectful for the neighbors around it. This is a view that's right behind the berm, where the community sign, the Harmony community signs are. So this is, again, is kind of a point where our building gets a little quieter, but you can see the entry off on the distance to the left. Again, along the edge that Ken described with a regional trail for folks to experience, connect outdoors. This is a more featured view of our entrance. So we're using some of those pieces I talked about. This is kind of more of a, like a European auto court, where you can park along here, you can pick up, you can drop off. It becomes a big point of energy, both for the building itself and the exterior. One of the other things you can see here, there's some indoor/outdoor spaces with large patios and decks for both the residents and for the entry. This is our northwest corner that shows more of the massing where it steps around. The memory care courtyard is the component that you can see off to the left that tucks around it. And the memory care suite portion of the building is on, again, a quieter part of the site. And this is our view back from the canal edge, looking to the eastern edge of the building. The west would be up over the top, and you can see how the transition from two to three stories occurs in the building. But again, it's four-sided architecture. There's never, never a backside, so to speak. And this is just farther around that same edge as you move to the north. This is there. This is our, the conclusion of our presentation, correct?
Ms. Peterson, Mr. Chadster, Mr. Merritt?
We do have, we do have one more. Byron Collins with Harmony LLC as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for your time. I certainly want to recognize the staff. They probably recognized from our earlier meetings I could be a little pesky and emotional. So my apologies, but I certainly want to recognize them for their patience and their professionalism. You could tell from the presentation tonight, there's been a lot of thorough work accomplished through this process. Logan, I know your efforts really working through that parking and trying to understand that and making that right before we could proceed is encouraging. I certainly want to recognize, before I jump into a few comments, I won't stay much long. I can't say much more than what's already been presented, but I wanted to recognize Mark Ting, my friend, associate, Sherry Jensen, my friend and associate. We've been working together on this project for 25 years. And 20 years ago, just about right now, 20 years ago, we got our final approval. That was on Main Street in Timneth. Back then, there was a little over 300 people in this town. And so I think the residents, the councils have passed, and the residents have made a wise decision to move to this community, but it has been a long process. I know when I signed up for this, I'm the second property owner associated with that property. That property was originally purchased back in the 1870s from Ulysses Grant for the Nelson-Duncan family. And so we take very strong pride in that property. And a lot of people would also have to recognize, again, this is to you, Logan, and your team, Chad. You can see these are really top-flight architects, really top-flight operator. They weren't the first ones to come in our office to want to do this. And I think they looked more than sideways at me a few times for my aggression about architectural standards, property values. I live in the property. I've lived on the property, and I wanted to be able to eventually live in this property because that could very well happen. And many of my residents talk of that right now because they're a few years older than me. The three things that I heard most about what people wanted in my community was a Mexican restaurant, a coffee shop, and a senior living facility. I don't hear about Mexican restaurant as much and coffee shops. I'm proud to say a fourth one just opened recently. And so, all that aside, we take the community very seriously. In fact, our mission and vision statements talked about transforming that property very diligently and very carefully in order to honor the integrity of, literally, that property is a sheep farm under the auspice of CSU Rams, if you recognize that. There is just tremendous history. I really wish that Rodney Nelson, who passed a year ago November, was here tonight to see this and hear about this because he was more anxious than most about, when are you going to do that commercial? Because Rodney and I and his family are still partners on that property. So on behalf of the family, I'm also very honored to be working with Harmony RN Holdings. RN is in Rodney Nelson and Kathy Nelson. So on behalf of all of the efforts that put in, I got a great operator, I got a great developer, an architect extraordinary, and two wonderful friends and associates. So thank you for your efforts, and I look forward to a positive result. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Anything else from staff or the applicants before we move on? Next, we will have public comment. We did receive two written comments, one from Mr. Whittington and another from Mr. Partiz and Ms. Harlan. So I assume all council members have had a chance to review those. Ms. Peters Garcia, has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No.
Is there anyone present who didn't sign up but would like to speak on this matter? I see no one, so we will move on to questions from council.
Just being, I think I'll share some of my same comments as the last project that came in. That was, I guess, backing to the south, what would be the southwest part of Harmony, more on the, you know, the Timneth Lake side of it and the concern of having multi-story homes. Knowing Byron and how well he's thought out for his existing residents in that community, my only concern, seeing the size of this, would be how does this block the, I guess, the development that's now being, the 12 or 13 lots right there off Club Drive? How are those backyards going to, is it taking, you know, you've got multimillion-dollar homes? Is it taking the sightline out for those homes that back to the canal and disrupting, you know, the potential view that those people bought into?
Good question. Thank you. Let's see if I can get back to, what's that? Oh, thanks, Chad. Appreciate it. Let me go back to a site plan. Now, this is a great, great question, Councilman. We actually, the entire design team spent a great deal of time dealing with this particular issue. And what I mentioned earlier about this site constraint, that the grade difference on the site possibly presented actually turned out to be a real asset to this development, allowing me, allowing us to lower the building approximately eight feet into the grade. If you can see on the far right-hand upper corner, you'll see the word Harmony. That is the last lot. There are lots beyond that at the end of the cul-de-sac. And what Liz and her architectural team did was they articulated that north side of the building so it stepped down, so as to allow view corridors to extend beyond the property. And by lowering it, those properties that are along Morning Song Drive on the, what would be the south side of Morning Star Drive, they have clear view across that northern portion of our property and to the west. Probably the biggest obstruction to views, to be real frank, are the 100-year-old cottonwood trees that exist. But that was thought about. In fact, it caused us and caused Liz, I think, a great deal of time considering what we needed to do to the building to make sure that we had clear and adequate views to the mountains. We didn't want to plug those views up. So thank you for asking that question.
Yeah, I mean, that was, go ahead. Ken, excellent comments. One other thing that we did in this regard was you could barely see in the corner of that layout those lots that are just peeking in there. In working through that extensively with Ken, there's water lines from Greeley, there's just all kinds of obstacles. And really, I didn't want to leave those particular lots to chance there. And so we, as the developer, this is the last phase of the residential portion of this project. So as the developer, we decided to hire, much like we did with our operators here, we are funding that fully ourselves. We hired somebody to do it so there would be no question on what was going to be built there and how it was going to be built there. Aaron, as the town manager, spoke earlier about costs going through the roof. We didn't even want to take the chance of enduring the risk of having somebody else do it and potentially messing it up at the very end. So we've taken on the risk to try to break even because those costs are now so high, Jeremy. We are risking our capital in order to finish out this project well. And Ken worked very extensively, and you'll be able to see it in the future, the view corridor for those lots, based on what Liz's team, having that building forward, that view corridor and the twist of that street allows people a visual, not only along the ditch in the cottonwood trees, but most certainly to the west. They will not be able to look through that building, but that building will provide them significant relief from the road noise and the road concerns. But we, as the developer, are the owner developer of those with a builder because we're not builders. But Sherry worked very extensively with another architect to create the design. But those are very expensive units, high risk, but we're hoping to at least break even and create another wonderful project at Harmony. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mayor Partiz.
Chad, so for tonight, in our review criteria, is the only Harmony Corridor standard that needs to be met tonight is the setback? Is that what's in A, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yeah, essentially, that was just the one that was ultimately determined at this stage of what was being met. We did a cursory review of, with the applicant team on what would be required within the Harmony Corridor. That was just the one that was shown today, adhering to that, but it would be subject to further review moving forward.
Okay. So all the other Harmony Corridor standards, all that will come out of separate time?
Yeah, that'll be reviewed during the site plan when that moves forward. So essentially, this conditional use is just, as council, do you feel that this is an appropriate location and use for this site? And do you feel that there are any impacts to the surrounding areas that need to be mitigated by conditions?
Okay. And thank you, Chad. And I just have a question. So one of the review criteria is looking at no significant traffic issues will be created. I guess I don't understand maybe why, you know, PFA wanted a emergency access in that case? Does that even relate to traffic? Like, why would they suggest that? Is that just something completely separate in that case?
Yeah, so it's not really based off of traffic. It is a requirement that any development have a secondary access in case there was some sort of emergency to where they were not able to access the property from the one proposed within the site. So it's just a requirement that any development that they have, there has to be a secondary access. Or there are other requirements of sprinkling different things like that that they can review against, but their recommendation was to have a secondary access. It would truly only be used in a scenario where Club Drive was not able to be accessed from any service.
So no way related to number E?
Does not.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I did have a question about safety impact. This location, I'm looking at what is walkable to it. And on the other side of Harmony, we have a convenience station and a liquor store. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, the safety of these residences as they cross Harmony. That's a very busy road to maybe access those facilities. Have we looked at ways to mitigate that from the kind of pedestrian safety lens that, you know, we're also taking with respect to schools and other crossings?
That's a great point. We have not discussed that for any measures for safety as far as the crossings. We could certainly look into that if there's direction on, kind of suggestion on how that would be improved.
And that intersection, as I recall, is a marked crosswalk. Is it a, do you have to know if it's a, I assume pushed?
Yeah, so there should be, it should be signalized with the crosswalk.
That, that is something that I think it wouldn't hurt to keep in mind in my professional practice. career, first career in law enforcement, I worked in a jurisdiction that had a similar facility. And from time to time, people would leave the facility and have a hard time getting back. And this being on a major corridor, I think that is something to keep in mind. I am, I have read the comments that have come in from the concerned citizens and the impact of, potential impact of this on the neighborhood. And I was also looking through the land use code in terms of other things that could go in here without a conditional use permit. And Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but shopping center or retail establishment could go in there. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Liquor store without a drive-through?
Correct.
A lodging establishment, so like a hotel?
Correct.
And restaurants and fast food. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I guess, in addressing those residents' concerns, arguably, some more impactful things would be approved there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All the questions I have. Counsel, any others?
No. I would just say, my 94-year-old mother, soon to be 95, has lived in a similar facility for 13-plus years. And they went through, it's actually quite a bit larger than this, but they went through an acquisition of an additional 20 acres and new designs, very much like what's being proposed here. So very modern-looking, very nice architectural designs. It seems like very well-thought-out community. I'm presuming that some of the residents are going to be independent living as well as assisted living. Is that correct?
Correct. Actually, this is unique in that it's a level of care. So you could move into this facility as an independent living family. And as needs arise and as maybe one individual partner needs some care, you can go from Level 1 Assisted to Level 2, Level 3, and then if necessary, to the memory care. I think one of the real beauties of this approach is that it allows people to stay intact in this development for a long period of time. When they need assistance, they can move in as independent, but when they need assistance, they don't need to move. If they need more care, they can access that greater care. And eventually, if they need memory care, special nursing care, they can move within the building itself rather than leaving what may be their home for a good period of time.
Yeah. And that's a little bit different than the facility I'm familiar with. I mean, it's a 3Cs continuous care facility, but when you move from independent to skilled or to assisted living, you do have to move. And that's the beauty of this, is you can stay in your same apartment without moving and without disruption. And so it's a really well-thought-out situation. So I think it's a great asset to the community.
Thank you. I'll just point out that, you know, when we began this project early on, what we recognized, along with Liz and Mike, is, and Mike spoke to this specifically when they were looking for a site, is that, you know, Timneth, this is a need which doesn't exist in Timneth. People are leaving Timneth to have to access these services to Fort Collins, Greeley, Loveland. And so you're losing all, we call it economic leakage. You're now going to capture what everyone has been needing for many years. So we think that that's a huge economic benefit to the town, and we're excited about that as well.
Yeah. The other thing that I think is really nice about this, and it's similar to the facility my mother's in, is that it's embedded in a residential, in a residential community. So there's opportunity, particularly with the golf course, et cetera, force and the clubhouse that's there for those that are in independent living situation. The social aspect is there. You're not plopping this in a purely business district where there's limited opportunities for social interactions outside of the community. So that's, to my mind, another nice aspect of this facility. Its actual location is better for the residents.
That's great. I'll also point out that, you know, although there's a great number of walking paths around the facility, in fact, you can actually walk a half mile around the entire site itself for those individuals that are capable. The getting onto the Harmony Regional Trail along the Harmony Road, going north on Club Drive, on that large detached sidewalk, being able to walk through the Harmony development is a huge benefit to residents to get outside of their home and their site and really interact with the community. Thank you.
Okay. There are no more questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution approving the conditional use permit for Harmony assisted living and memory care community.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good discussion, Councilmember Holt.
I think, for many reasons, I'll be supporting this. I think it meets the comprehensive plan of, you know, alternative living. I think the thoughtfulness of the construction. I frankly actually like the, excuse me, like the recommendation from the fire department of the auxiliary entrance off Harmony for many reasons. I think, you know, one of the concerns would be the potential need for lights and sirens, ambulance, fire. And coming off of Harmony will be even less disruption for the residents of Harmony, so on and so forth. So, you know, I'll definitely be in favor of this project, and I think it brings a needed asset to this town.
All right. Councilmember Jenkins?
I've already pointed out, I think this is a great asset for the community and well-thought-out, well-designed. And I'm totally in favor of it.
I will be in favor of this as well. I feel that it meets all of the review criteria that we are looking at here. And I think it does bring in an additional housing category that we don't currently have in our community, and I think that will be very beneficial.
I agree. So based on the review criteria tonight, I will be supporting this. I thank staff, once again, for their hard work. I think the developer and everybody who presented tonight really helped explain why all the criteria was met tonight. For me, it's, I don't think it's really an economic benefit. I think maybe six months ago, I felt like we lost diversity of housing. So I think it's a diversity of housing of also why I will be supporting this. So, thank you.
I'm also in support. I have carefully considered the concerns that were raised by public comment. I can certainly appreciate the perspectives that was brought there. However, when I look at the land being zoned, commercial mixed use under the Harmony corridor standards, I do believe that this use fits in with the intent of that standard and that, to the extent that there are those concerns, certainly, the developer could have put in any number of other things that would have a much more significant impact. And should we deny this, you know, be careful what you ask for, I suppose. I agree that this will serve needed use in our community. It'll serve a community that, at the moment, isn't otherwise served. I, you know, did make comment about some of the safety concerns there based on my own experience in another facility. I wouldn't necessarily expect the applicant to be responsible for reconfiguring Harmony or putting an underpass under Harmony or something like that. But I do think that is something to keep on the radar. I was going to hassle them about how many staff were going to work there and whether or not the parking limitations are being skirted. But actually, the parking that they're putting on scene is still quite a bit higher than what the minimum would be allowed. So I think that that is all being done in good faith. Any other comments before we move on? All right. Very well. Then all those in favor of approving the resolution, approving the conditional use permit for Harmony assisted living and memory care community signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Name? The conditional use is approved. You know, it's like, thank you all. Thank you, staff and presenters this evening. I believe unless anyone has anything else, we can adjourn.